Ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Finance Committee meeting tonight, May 4th, 2016. Time right now I have is 6:01 and we'll call the meeting to order. With that, I'd like to ask everybody to rise with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would ask for a motion to suspend the agenda and go into the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Town of Millville, notice of public hearing, Finance Committee. The Town of Millville Finance Committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 4th, 2016, at 6:00 PM at the Longfellow Municipal Center in Millville to address the financial articles that will appear on the warrants for the special and annual town meeting to be held on Monday, May the 9th, 2016, at the Millville Elementary School. Richard Corvello, Chairman, Millville Finance Committee. Okay, I think we'll start with the special town meeting warrant. If anybody needs a copy, there are copies up here at the front. Okay, Article 1, to establish and fund public safety stabilization fund. To see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to establish a special purpose stabilization fund, to be known as Public Safety Stabilization Fund, for the purpose of having funds available to fund capital costs associated with public safety departments, police and fire, and further to transfer to that said stabilization fund the sum of $40,000, and further to vote to rescind the vote taken at the special town meeting held on November 14th, 2011, under Article 2, authorizing the creation of a public safety stabilization fund, or take any action in relation thereto. Paul, I'm going to ask you to do the explanation.
Sure, I can actually paraphrase the explanation, or would you rather I just read it?
I think we should read it and then we can discuss it.
Okay, this article will establish a public safety stabilization fund for police and fire capital costs to be funded from the ambulance receipts reserve. Now, vote to use the ambulance receipts must be made in the dollar amount under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40, subsection 5B, without a percentage. It was the town's intent in 2011 to create such a fund with the below article, however the execution was not precise. Basically, this is just fixing a clerical issue. The intent is exactly the same, it's just changing it from transferring dollar amounts into there from when it was originally established, having it being a percentage, and the DOR doesn't like it to be a percentage, so it has to be dollar amounts done at the town meetings.
Okay, the Selectmen recommendation was approve it 4 to 0. The FINCOM recommendation was to approve it 3 to 0. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Okay. Moving on to Article 2. Rescind vote authorizing the payment of cable TV licenses. To see if the town will vote to rescind the vote taken at the annual town meeting held on May 11th, 2015, under Article 5, authorizing payment of funds to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, or take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by the town accountant. And I'll ask Mike to...
Per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F 3/4, such appropriation must be made in dollar amounts with no percentage in the article. The previous article approved by the town meeting included an option for 50% of the cable fees, which was not allowable. The previous article was as follows and outwinds the article, but again, this goes back to the DLS report that was noted that these things were not proper and that we needed to arrange them, and also by recommendation of the town treasurer that we should, accountant should change those things, so.
And this is similar to Article 1, for the same purpose. Selectmen recommended unanimous floor, and the FINCOM did the same. Are there any questions from the audience? Okay. Move on to Article 3. Establish a peg access and cable-related funds account. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F 3/4, to establish a new fund to be known as a peg access and cable-related funds account, for the purpose of reserving cable license fees received from Charter Communications, and further to transfer from said account the sum of $21,500 to fund the cable access department's FY '17 operating budget, or take any other action relative thereto. Again, submitted by the town accountant. Paul?
Cable access revolving fund was previously approved for this purpose, however, that is not the appropriate method for managing these funds. Because these funds are used to offset cable access department's operating budget, they should be reserved in an appropriation fund. So basically, the fund receives the money, and originally, the fund was paying the money also, but that can't happen. So now, we transfer from that fund into the general operating budget, and the salaries and expenses get paid out of the general operating budget.
One last thing, too. The biggest problem with Department of Revenue had was you were paying salaries out of that account.
Right.
So, it worked the same way, the difference is that now we've got an offset to the budget amount, so it doesn't affect the taxpayers at all.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion on the floor? And the Selectmen approved that unanimously, 4 to 0. Article 4, cable license fees. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $7,500 from a peg access and cable-related funds account to forward to the superintendent of schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the director of the library and media services to enhance curriculum offerings that are available in the school district, or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the town accountant. Paul? I meant Mike.
The explanation is, this is an annual article which allows the town to forward a certain sum of money from fees collected pursuant to the town's cable franchise license agreement with Charter Communications to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District.
Basically, we rescinded the one that we had made and put this one in its place.
Selectmen and the FINCOM unanimously approved the article. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Article 5. Fund other post-employment's benefits, OPEB. To see if the town will vote to fund, will vote to transfer from any available funds the sum of $7,500 to the OPEB liability trust fund, for the purpose of reducing the unfunded liability of health care and other post-employment benefits of retired employees, or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Paul?
This article authorizes the town to partially fund in FY 2016 the previously-created OPEB liability trust fund to address the town's unfunded liability for employee retirement benefits. If the account is not funded, the town's financial statement may be negatively impacted, possibly affecting the town's bond rating and future ability to borrow.
This article was unanimously approved by both the FINCOM and the Selectmen. I think we, if I'm not mistaken, our liability is around 140...
I think, I don't know...
About 145.
145, okay. And we're partially funding that on an annual basement basis that can, you're going with it.
And this is for the current year, and then we'll see in the annual that there's one for the upcoming year.
Upcoming year. Okay. Any other discussion in the audience? Okay. That completes the Articles on the Special Town Meeting. I'll ask one more time if there is any other discussion on them. If not, we will move on to the... That was the special town meeting, we'll move on to the annual town meeting. Article 1, monetary increases. To see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless motion or amendment states the source of funds as being from available free cash or line item, article, or other funding source that will be reduced by the same amount, or take any other action in relation to thereto. Submitted by the Finance Committee. Mike?
This article requires that in any individual making or amending a motion which will increase any budget line item that has not been recommended by the Finance Committee must also provide the source of funding for said increase.
Any questions on that one? Selectmen approved that unanimously. Article 2, authorized loans. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money in anticipation of revenues of the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to take a note or notes therefore payable within one year, and to renew any notes as may be given for a period of less than one year, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 17, or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
This is an annual article which allows the treasurer to borrow money as necessary to fund the operations of town government in anticipation of receiving tax receipts, grants, bond proceeds, et cetera, which fund the operations of the town.
Any other questions on that article? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article 3. Highway Department, Chapter 90. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate to borrow or transfer from any available funds or any combination thereof the sum of $500,000 for the Highway Department to be used for engineering, construction, reconstruction, and/or repair to town roads and bridges with said funds to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under Mass General Laws, Chapter 90, or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
This is an annual article which allows the town to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer funds in anticipation of reimbursement revenues from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for road repair assistance under Mass General Law, Chapter 90. Said funds not to exceed the town's apportionment.
This was voted unanimously by the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM. Oh, by the Board of Selectmen only.
Yeah, unfortunately, the Finance Committee hadn't voted on any of these articles when we had finalized the warrant. Mr. Chairman, you weren't here, so the two of you held off. I think you voted after we had finalized the warrants, so.
Okay. Any questions? Brian? The last we knew, there was $500,000.
There's discrepancy there, but myself and the town have...
Okay, so the way it's written, you're going to be able to operate and accomplish what you presented to us that night? Pretty much so?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, revolving funds. To see if the town will vote to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2 for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, as follows. POXON Recreation, the spending authority is POXON Recreation Commission for ballfield uses, and the use of the fund is for maintenance and improvements to ballfields and playgrounds, and the expenditure limit is $5,000. For the police department, the spending authority is the Chief of Police and Fire, and the revenue source is firearms and fingerprinting fees, and the use of the funds is cost-related to providing both services, and the expenditure limit for FY '17 is $1,000. Or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the town accountant.
This is an annual article which is required to operate the town's revolving funds. This allows the town to raise revenue from a specific service and use those revenues without appropriation to support the service. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 53E 1/2 stipulates that each fund must be reauthorized each year in annual town meeting, and that a limit on the total amount that may be spent from each fund must be established at that time.
Selectmen recommended approval unanimously. Are there any questions from the audience? Hearing none? Go on to Article 5. Cable license fees. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the peg access and cable-related funds account the sum of $7,500 forward to the superintendent of schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the director of library and media services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available to the school district, or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the town accountant.
This is an annual article which allows the town to forward a certain sum of money from fees collected pursuant to the town's cable franchise license agreement with Charter Communications to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. A similar arrangement exists with the town of Blackstone as well.
Selectmen unanimously approved it. Are there any questions? Any questions? No? Okay. Article 6. Fund other post-employment benefits, OPEB. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds the sum of $7,500 to the OPEB liability trust fund, for the purpose of reducing the unfunded accuriative liability of health care and other post-employment benefits of retired employees, or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
This article authorizes the town to partially fund FY '17, the previously-created OPEB liability trust fund, to address the town's unfunded liability for employee retirement benefits. If the account is not funded, the town's financial statement may be negatively impacted, possibly affecting the town's bond rating and future ability to borrow. So that's the one for this year.
That's the one for this year. Any other questions?
Last fiscal year, we'd move on to the one for this fiscal year, coming up.
Okay, I'm going to pass over Article 7 because it is not a financial article. And I'm not so sure on Article 8 as well. I don't think we've ever asked for advice from the Executive Secretary, Town Accountant, and maybe the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Is that one that's normally reviewed in a public hearing with the Finance Committee?
I believe so, because it does set the rates of pay.
Okay.
Usually, we do seek finance recommendation on that.
Personal Bylaw Amendment, Classification and Compensation Plan. To see if the town will vote to amend the Millville Bylaws, Chapter 20, Personnel Bylaw, Section 20-8, Compensation System, Paragraph D, coverage by replacing the current classification and compensation plan effective July 1st, 2015, with a new Classification and Compensation Plan effective July 1st, 2016, so that the plan as amended will be read as follows. Additions are identified in bold italic text, and deletions are identified in bold strikeout text, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Okay. The folks who are watching this at home, I'm going to read it. Hopefully, you'll be able to understand where we're coming from. The first line is the title, Classification and Compensation Plan, its effective July 1st, There's a strikeout on the next line. The line says, employees, no steps, employees may move within range based on merit increase. And that was stricken from the previous plan. The first section is highway laborer, library assistant, clerical worker, janitor, camera operator, and van driver. And the way it's set up is by grade, and then there's a minimum, medium, and maximum range. So the range goes from minimum to maximum, and in this case, the previous minimum was $10 an hour, the medium was $11 an hour, and the maximum was $13.50 an hour. The new range is $11 an hour, $12 an hour, and $14 an hour. The next line is outreach worker, and underneath that, stricken from the...
Secretary 1.
Secretary 1.
Cable access coordinator.
Custodian, cable access coordinator. The secretary 1 was stricken. Custodian was, the new minimum was $12.15 and $17 an hour, along with the cable access The second one is secretary 2, stricken, just the number 2, and I'd ask an explanation on that because I'm not sure with that.
We, previously, we had a secretary 1 and a secretary 2. They'll just be one secretarial position now, so we've eliminated the two.
Okay, under that position is the Assistant Town Clerk, Highway Assistant, and Deputy Fire Chief. And the Assistant Town Clerk, 3, that was stricken. The Highway Assistant, I believe this was added, or is it just increase in salary?
No, it's just the hourly rate setting.
Okay, the hourly rate was increased from $14, $17, and $20. And the Deputy Fire Chief, non-bargaining union employee, was stricken in its entirety. The next one is Level 4, Assistant Collector, Assistant Assessor, Town Planner, Librarian, Senior Center Director, and the Deputy Fire Chief was added to this line. The salaries that were stricken were $15 an hour, $18 an hour, and $21 an hour. The new salaries are $16 an hour, $19 an hour, and $22 an hour. Under Grade 5, the Fire Chief, part-time, salary 12 hours a week, $12,000, $16,000, and $20,000. The town accountant, part-time. Under Level 6, salary, 18 hours a week, and stricken from that was by contract. The previous salary was $18,000 a year, $21,000 a year, and $24,000 a year. The new numbers are $20,000, $24,000, and $28,000. On the Level 7, this, on the Grade 7, this includes the treasure collector in bold PPT, which means?
Permanent part-time.
Permanent part-time. The salaries that were stricken were 30, 36, and 42. The new salary is 34 hours a week at 38, 44, and 50. Next grade was, was Grade 8, Executive Secretary, salary by contract, and that was stricken. The salary line now was 38, 46, and 55. Underneath that, under Grade 8, is a new position, Town Administrator, full-time, salary 40 hours a week by contract. Minimum salary is $60,000, the medium salary is $67,000, and the maximum salary is $7,000.
$75,000.
$75,000, excuse me. Under Grade 9, the Police Chief.
That's now a part of 8.
Now a part of 8, okay. So, Grade 9 was eliminated. His salary is now 40 hours a week by contract, and it falls in the range of the 60, 67, and Also, there was an asterisk on Secretary 1, Grade 2. Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Town Hall, and that was also stricken because the position was stricken. There's a double asterisk, Business Office, Board of Health, and added to that was Town Hall and Communications, and that falls under Secretary position. Or take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Michael?
Explanation per town personal bylaw. Any amendments to the town's classification and compensation plan must be reflected and approved at town meeting. Chapter 144 of the Acts of 2014 provide for increases in the state's required minimum wage, which the town previously voted to follow, effective January 1st, 2017. The state minimum hourly rate will increase to $11. This increase will cause adjustments to the pay scale of various positions. Additionally, adjustments are made to the pay scales of some of the positions based on an increased work hours approved by the Board of Selectmen. Further, the Board of Selectmen voted to create the new position of Town Administrator and eliminate the position of Executive Secretary, so this has been reflected in the amendments. Lastly, both Grades 8 and 9 have been combined into single Grade 8.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Mr. Finn?
Just one. Here's in the beginning here, it says no steps, and that is stricken, at the very beginning of the article. Index that as employees may move within range based on merit increases, and that is also stricken. How then would a person move between the minimum, the medium, and the maximum, and what regulation would they be able to either get the increase or to not get the increase? If those two articles, or those two items are stricken?
That would be based on increases approved by the Board of Selectmen and subsequently town meeting, so COLA increases are what the Board of Selectmen have been voting for the past several years.
So it's not based on merit, it's based on COLA?
Any other questions?
How was, if I may, how was COLA formulated, regulated, how was it, is it indexed? Is it...
I'm not sure there is a COLA.
It's generally 2% is what the Board has agreed to for the past several years.
Okay, there's nothing, though, in writing, though, that stipulates what that is.
So there is no indication as to what COLA would be other than 2% sounds good.
Correct. Exactly.
Mr. Finn, to be, um, to be reviewing on Monday. To be reviewing on Monday. Just to be doing something.
Okay, no, I just...
We have said we take of it as a COLA increase, and I know, at least for me, we gauge that by our fire and police contract also. And they get a little bit more in some years, but because we don't have that many employees and our fire and police do get increases within their contract, we feel it's important to do so for all of our employees.
Yeah, to prevent anybody from getting an increase, I think that's great. I was just wondering what the measure was, how a person gets an increase, and what merit, how would they get to that point? I've now understood that it's based on a 2%, basically a COLA is what I have. Or I just want to then understand, okay, I got it, it's 2%. If it is a COLA, what index makes up a COLA? That's just a question. I mean, you asked, so I'm asking.
Mm-hmm. I don't have an answer for you on that. I think that's something that needs to be reviewed further. There are indices out there that can be used for that?
Well, that's the CPIs and things like that.
Right.
Things that could be used. I'm just curious, is that what was going to make a lot fall piece of? And then do a merit, it had to do with just what the CPI gave? If that's the case, that's the answer. It's just...
I agree with you, and I, but I think that's something you need to take up with the Selectmen on it, because that's something that should be established prior to the start of the budget season, and that's going to be how we're going to do it. Or it should be codified in either our bylaws or how that, how that would work.
Okay, just...
And that can work for you, or it can work against you. Some years that, that goes up. Some years it goes, you know, as a federal employee, I understand that every year, you know, our COLA system goes up. And then each step goes up to match that COLA every year as well, on there.
So, being a social security recipient, I also sometimes I don't give you anything on the increase. That was the other thing I wanted.
Okay, Article 9, fund capital budget. And I'm not sure if I have all the capital plan here. Is it in there? I don't have that.
I don't think it's worth the time.
It wasn't passed out on the...
Do you need to see the most updated? Yesterday? It's not the most updated one.
Is that the one for $67,000?
That's the one that, I think that's the most updated one. I don't think anything's changed since this is...
Nope, that's the approved capital budget. Nope, that's the approved capital budget for FY seventeen.
Okay.
It's two pages, I believe. Yes, it's in the packets.
Okay. Article nine, fund capital budget. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to fund the fiscal year 2017 proposed capital budget or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the capital program committee.
This annual article follows for funding the capital budget as part of the town's ongoing goal to create a five-year capital plan in order to address the numerous capital improvement projects and equipment which exceed the operating budget.
Okay.
Currently that is sixty-seven thousand dollars.
The amount to the capital budget is sixty-seven thousand dollars, but I think I need to explain to both the people in the audience and the people at home what that sixty-seven thousand dollars represents. There are, one, two, three, four, five different capital items that were, that were approved by the, and submitted to the finance committee for funding consideration. And I believe these were approved at the last joint finance committee meeting and the board of selectmen?
That's correct.
On that, okay. Okay, the first item is the senior center, FY seventeen commercial refrigerator. Additional funding towards the existing capital budget line item entitled FY seventeen senior center refrigerator. Senior center's existing refrigerator is approximately fifteen to twenty years old and was purchased when the senior center was built and is now reaching its life expectancy. Refrigerator needs to be replaced in FY seventeen at an estimated cost of six thousand five hundred dollars. Town meeting approved partial funding of forty-five hundred dollars in FY sixteen. The capital program committee recommends funding the additional two thousand dollars in FY seventeen, so the equipment request is fully funded. Failure to replace this appliance will prevent adequate maintenance of temperature and storage of food. And I think I'll ask if there's any questions before I move on to the next item in here?
Just one. Is, you said refrigerator, is this freezer, refrigerator combination or is it?
I don't know. I don't know, I think you need to go to the senior center on that. This is, I wasn't at the, the capital planning meeting. Helen, if you can answer that, if not, we can take that, take it up with the senior center.
I was not at the last meeting. I do know, Mr. Chairman, that the original submission by the senior center was more than ten thousand, which is how it became a capital item.
Correct.
At the last meeting, they resubmitted with a reduced amount, but the capital committee decided to keep it within the capital budget at that time since it was already in there.
That went along with the article that was in last year's budget for the stove, which they asked for ten thousand dollars. They are returning fifty-seven hundred and eleven dollars of that ten thousand dollars that was not spent. So in other words, they've got their stove under, for, stalled for under five thousand dollars on that. Okay. Any other questions on, on that? Police department, FY seventeen police cruiser, seventeen thousand dollars. Additional funding towards the existing capital budget line item entitled FY seventeen police cruiser. The police department is in need of a new police cruiser for FY seventeen to replace the 2010 vehicle, which is close to reaching its usefulness as a frontline police vehicle. Police vehicles with high mileage are subject to an unusual amount of wear, often unreliable and should be replaced to maintain the integrity of the fleet. The estimated cost to replace the vehicle in FY seventeen is thirty-five thousand dollars. Town meeting approved partial funding of eighteen thousand dollars in FY sixteen. Capital program committee recommends funding an additional seventeen thousand in FY seventeen to fund, to fully fund the purchase. Failure to replace this vehicle will place an additional burden on the other police vehicles and potentially cause them to wear prematurely. Any questions from, any questions from the audience?
I have a question. So you're saying, in this article, saying the eighteen thousand is already put aside in?
FY sixteen.
A capital account from last year's.
Correct.
So I guess my same question is going to apply to the next items that you have coming up. Going backwards to your special town meeting warrant, Article one is establishing the fund of public safety stabilization fund, and I understand this was already moving on at the special town meeting, but it's fixing the words. So it's already established stabilization fund. But the description of this fund says, the article will establish a public safety stabilization fund for police and fire capital costs. So my concern is, you, you have forty thousand dollars there, but my concern is, is the next four items on the capital cost of sixty-one thousand dollars total are all police and fire, that we're putting other money, when you're, you're, you're not using, it's almost like two separate?
I can answer that.
Two separate accounts, you're not using your, your capital account that you established for public safety.
I can answer that question, exactly. That fund was never actually separated the way it had been intended to be separated, so it was one lump sum of ambulance receipts reserve. Okay, so right now is when we're actually with, these articles is when we're actually establishing that fund, because currently there's a total of eighty-eight thousand dollars and change in the ambulance receipts reserve fund. We, when we balance a budget, we need to figure out how to do it before these articles pass. So we're taking forty thousand dollars from the current lump sum ambulance receipts reserve fund, putting it into the, um, public safety reserve account, stabilization account. And we're using the remainder, forty-eight thousand dollars ambulance receipts reserve to go against the sixty-seven thousand dollar capital budget, and the remainder of that is coming from free cash. We can only spend, in our planning process, what we know we already have. So we're establishing a fund, the, the forty thousand dollars that's going into the public safety stabilization account, we're establishing a fund for expenses that we've got coming down the road, and we're using the money that we have now to fund the capital expenses that are here now.
Okay, but if you include the forty thousand that you're speaking of, and I have that math in front of me, I know exactly what you're talking about, forty, the, the total balance is eighty-eight thousand right now.
Correct.
Your capital money, the money you're putting aside for capital is actually ninety-seven thousand dollars this year. It's just split up into two separate?
Nope.
But you're, you're not including the forty thousand.
That's correct.
It's getting put into a stabilization account for capital costs to police and fire.
For future capital costs, correct.
So that's?
This is, this is the money that's going to get spent now. The forty thousand we're putting aside is into our savings account for public safety.
Because the next few articles are for, um, one is for nineteen, or two are for FY nineteen. So they're for few, it's putting money, additional money aside for capital items.
Absolutely.
For police and fire.
Yep.
But you're not using the forty thousand dollars that was established for that purpose.
Because the need is not this fiscal year, the need for those items is in the out years.
So if you're doing transferring that into the stabilization?
Can I finish? The need to fund that all at once is, is excessive. So what the capital committee and the selectmen and the FinCon decided to do was to fund them over a period of several years to lessen the blow. If you see on the, on the police cruiser, we did fund it, a portion of it in sixteen.
Yes, but that, you didn't have the stabilization set up for them, that's why you did that, and that makes sense. I'm just saying that if you add the sixty-seven thousand in capital on here and the forty thousand that you're putting aside for police and fire capital is ninety-seven thousand dollars.
It's actually a hundred and seven thousand, when you add sixty-seven and forty.
I'm not sure, one is a, is a straight transfer.
When is money getting spent and what is transferring?
So shouldn't the next items be transferred?
One is, one is being transferred from, from, we established the two accounts, the account, and we transferred forty thousand out of the eighty, eight thousand one hundred and twenty-two seventy-six into the public safety stabilization fund. That's a, that's a transfer of money.
I understand.
Okay? The others are expenditures.
Right, but the, the, the purpose of the account that that forty thousand dollars is transferred to is for police and fire capital as, just as the description is written. So shouldn't the next items that are for future use be transferred into the public fire safety stabilization and not into capital? Because they're going towards those specific items.
What you're asking us to do is to transfer the entire eighty-eight thousand.
No.
I don't understand what you, what, why you're asking us to?
Well, you're net, you, I brought the question up on the first police item, but you have two items also, police department cruiser FY nineteen, fire department FY nineteen ambulance, transferring into a capital budget, but that money should be going into the new, the established fund for public safety stabilization fund, because the purpose of that fund is for police and fire capital costs. So these are police and fire capital costs. That money is set aside just for them.
In order to spend that money, in order to spend money on a specific capital item, it has to be in a specifically established capital line item for that item. Not a general, not a general line item for whatever, but a specific capital line item. So basically what we're doing is, for example, if we know the useful life of an item is ten years, instead of waiting till year ten and saying, hey, let's spend this now.
But my question is where, where, there's a capital line item that you're transferring it to, to hold it for that purchase?
Correct.
I think she's?
You have?
The forty thousand dollars is being transferred.
Taking the money out of, that's public safety account to put it towards these purchases.
Or putting this money for the FY nineteen items into that stabilization account because that is what you said it's for.
No, no. There needs to be a specific line item in order to spend out of it for that specific item.
So what are you, going, going back to Article one on the special town meeting, what is that going to be used for?
The forty thousand dollars will be used for expenditures that come up in public safety that haven't been identified yet.
It says fire, it says capital costs and that, to me?
Right, those things haven't been identified yet. They haven't been identified yet.
So you're going to, you're constantly transferring money into the, the public safety stabilization fund for unknown capital costs, and you're going to continue to transfer capital money for police and fire into the capital fund?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's saving for the things that we recognize are going to be issues coming up. Well, no, but. I don't know how else it could be described, but.
Any other question?
No, I just want to just say this, out of that sixty-seven thousand, the ambulance reserve is transferring forty-eight thousand dollars against this capital request, leaving nineteen thousand dollars that we got to get from another area. So in essence, we're funding two-thirds of that expense that's coming out of FY seventeen out of the ambulance reserve, the forty thousand put in there for future costs. Basically, the way the law reads would be for an ambulance, you know, if everything goes right. Now that, what, that's some serious money, and the town doesn't have it right now, so they're just starting to save for that or any other major capital equipment that might happen that the police chief might bring up to the finance committee and the board. So we're funding two-thirds of these capital items out of the ambulance reserve right now, right now with this budget. You take the forty-eight out of the sixty-seven, and there's like nineteen left, and there's an item here for two thousand bucks coming out of that, so I think we're getting the rest of it, I don't know if it's from free cash or some other place.
We're getting six, six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents of it from closing out some capital funds that are, that have been spent.
But we're using that money for existing expenses right now that's needed, and the forty is for future capital items that's going to come down the road.
Public safety capital items.
Yeah.
Actually, it's specific, it says police and fire.
Right. I think what you'll see next year is?
But there's no capital item associated with that at this time, is the point.
I think what you'll see next year is, if you look on page two of that, there's another police cruiser for FY nineteen.
That's what I'm talking about, the chief's coming, should be transferred into that stabilization account. The FY nineteen cruiser and FY nineteen rescue.
I think what you'll see next year is when we fund the remainder of that, it'll come out of that public safety stabilization fund. To fund it. Is what was the intent of doing this.
Mr. Chairman, just maybe for a point of clarification, we didn't know if this was going to pass, so we really couldn't count on those funds to fund those capital items? So we use other?
I'm not suggesting taking that forty and putting it towards this. What I'm saying is, you're, this is capital funding, but it's all police and fire, and you already set up a police and fire capital account. So either, either in my mind, two, one of two things need to change, the police, police, police and fire item need to be moved in and be transferred into that new account that's, that is hopefully approved that night. So that money that's being put aside is put with the forty thousand dollars.
No.
Or then it needs to be?
Because then you can't buy these items.
Right, they're transferred to this, those.
Shouldn't they refer to, or just money putting aside?
These, these items can only be purchased out of the line item that the money is put in specifically for these items. It can't be spent out of the police and fire stabilization account.
So we're back to my original statement, which is we're really putting a hundred and seven thousand dollars, as you corrected me, towards capital costs, not sixty-seven, because forty thousand that moved first for capital items only for police and fire, for future items that are unknown, and sixty-seven is being moved here to specific line items. So it's a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Yep.
And I don't disagree with that, and I, and I'll go back to what I said before, some of these are for out years, and that forty thousand will be used towards those into the out years. Okay, the next one, police department, FY seventeen administrative vehicle, eighteen thousand dollars. Fully fund a new capital budget line item entitled FY seventeen police administrative vehicle. Police department's current administrative vehicle is still in excellent condition. However, it will be turned over to the fire department in FY seventeen. The fire department's existing administrative vehicle has reached its useful life and needs to be replaced. The existing police vehicle is an appropriate vehicle for the fire department because it's a small SUV. Once the vehicle is transferred to the fire department, the police department will be in need of a new police administrative vehicle. It is recommended that a smaller, more economical vehicle be purchased to replace the existing vehicle. It's important that both departments have administrative vehicles so the official and more expensive public safety equipment is not used for administrative purposes. The capital planning committee agrees that handing down the existing police administrative vehicle to the fire department and purchasing outright a new police administrative vehicle is the most fiscally responsible choice. The estimated cost to replace the vehicle in FY seventeen is eighteen thousand dollars. Capital program committee recommends funding six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents from completed capital projects and funding the remaining twelve thousand in FY seventeen to fully fund the purchase. Failure to replace this vehicle will place a burden on the fire department. If I'm correct in assuming, the chief has an SUV right now that he uses, he's going to turn that to the police department?
The fire department.
The fire department to get rid of the vehicle that's old that the deputy chief uses right now and give him the SUV, and the chief will purchase a smaller car for the administrative vehicle for the police department.
Correct.
Correct on that? Do you have some questions on that? Ask away. I, I have them right here too, by the way.
The fire department, the deputy chief is going to, for use of the? The fire department, deputy chief is going to have full use of the vehicle that's being handed down?
As he has a vehicle currently, yes.
Okay. Is that a common practice across our town and other towns for deputy chiefs to have an administrative vehicle?
Well, before, when we had a part-time chief, as you well know, he had a car.
A fire chief, yes.
Yep, fire chief.
Well, the deputy, the deputy did not.
Well, there's a need for an administrative vehicle for the fire department and administrative vehicle for the police department.
So is it only the deputy chief that has full use of that vehicle?
The other, the other fire, the other fireman have use of that vehicle currently. It's used for administrative purposes. It's used to go out and do inspections. It's used to run errands associated with the fire department. Because otherwise, their only choice would be to take the ambulance, which is a two-hundred thousand dollar vehicle. So let's let them take the used SUV instead of taking out the two-hundred thousand dollar vehicle. That will reduce its useful life. It's being efficient with our resources.
Thank you.
Mr. Finney?
Just a question, when we, if this passes and we end up having to buy a new vehicle for the police chief. I think under the green energy situation, it has to be hybrid. Is that correct?
Not, not necessarily.
I don't think it has to be a hybrid, it has to be an efficient vehicle.
It's an, it's an economical vehicle that he's looking at.
Okay, so it's not necessarily a hybrid, but an economical vehicle.
The hybrid would have put.
And public safety vehicles are exempt.
Yeah, right.
And, and a hybrid vehicle, cause, cause this was discussed, the hybrid vehicle would have been a significantly additional cost. The administrative vehicle for the police department needs to be a lesser vehicle than the administrative vehicle for the fire department at this time.
My biggest concern was that if we get signed on the green energy project, the fire department, we had, it's exempt if it's a, if it's a vehicle.
I mean, it's still gonna be a, probably a Ford Fusion, that's thirty-five miles.
Whatever, 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 I just wanna make sure that we make sure that if that was the case, but, thank you, Joe.
You know, do better than the Explorer right now.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that one? Okay. Next one, police department FY nineteen cruiser. Additional funding towards the existing new capital budget item, line item entitled FY two thousand and nineteen police cruiser. The police department will be in need of a new police cruiser in FY nineteen to replace the two thousand and twelve vehicle, which has been, which will be reaching its usefulness as, as a frontline police vehicle. Police vehicles with high mileage are subject to the unusual amount where often unreliable integrity, fleet. This is pretty much the same article as, same as the other one. The cost to replace the vehicle in FY two nineteen is, is thirty-eight thousand dollars. Town meeting approved ten thousand dollars towards that vehicle in FY sixteen. Capital planning committee recommends funding this line item at ten thousand dollars in FY seventeen. Committee recommends continual funding of this expense each year for the next two years till it's fully funded. Failure to replace this vehicle will place an additional burden on other police vehicles and potentially cause them to wear prematurely. Failure to replace this line item will result in future capital budgeting problems. Questions?
Essentially, this particular line item and, and, or this particular issue and the next one also is, the administrator of the police and fire departments has come up with a replacement plan for the vehicles. There's a certain cycle that the police vehicles and the fire vehicles go through. They last a certain amount of time based on the amount of miles that are put on annually. And for the planning purposes and efficient planning purposes, we're starting for the first time in a very long time to actually put some money aside for a purchase that we know is coming up in the future. So we put a little bit aside every year to the point where when it, when that balance comes due, we've got it. Rather than having to come up with a full thirty-eight thousand dollars in FY nineteen, we'll have already put a little bit aside along the way to get to that point.
Hey, Ed, that, that very point is a strong recommendation given to us by the DOR as well as the community contact to have the solid, forward-looking capital investment program.
In other words, he's not replacing two police guys in one given year. He's staggering them over the out years. I think it's a good idea. I think, I also think, Brian, your trucks are in that position now to be, for us to be able to do that as well. You have a brand-new dump truck and you have an older one.
A two thousand and twelve. It's not brand-new anymore.
Wasn't that that long ago?
Yeah.
Well, that, that would be something we need to get into something like this as well to start replacing. I know you wanna, you wanna rebuild one to get some more life out of it this year. And that's a great thing. But I think we need to get a refreshment plan going as well on that. And I think this committee and the, and the capital plan, committee would be glad to put that forward. So we have ourselves in the same position we have the police department and fire department to do that with yours as well. Okay, the last one is the ambulance. Fire department FY nineteen ambulance. Additional funding towards the existing capital budget line item entitled FY two nineteen ambulance. Millville Fire Rescue will be in need of a new ambulance in FY nineteen to replace the existing two thousand and ten ambulance, which is reaching its useful life expectancy as a town's sole ambulance. Estimated cost to replace the ambulance in FY nineteen is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Town meeting approved partial funding of twenty thousand in FY sixteen. Capital program committee recommends an additional partial funding of twenty thousand dollars in FY seventeen. It is the intent of the capital program committee to recommend partially funding this line item over the next two years until it's fully funded. Failure to replace this vehicle will cause complications to town's emergency response and potentially cause an escalation of the town's vehicle repairs maintenance budget. Failure to partially fund this item will result in future capital budgeting problems. Same situation as all these others. This one is gonna be a big-ticket item, really need to replace it in two thousand and nineteen. Any questions?
I, I think the interesting thing to point here is, is it, it appears when you look at this capital plan, it's all police and fire. And with the exception of the small senior center item, it, it is all police and fire. However, that's our largest department that requires capital expenditures, number one. And number two, any of the other departments that require capital expenditures have all the right in the world to come to the capital program committee and submit their requests. So this, it, it just happens to be that on this particular document, it's mostly police and fire. But that doesn't mean that it's not available to other departments to come before the capital program committee and plead their case on things that they might need to operate their departments.
One that should be on here is probably a computer refresh at some point in time, I think. Doing that, it, any, it, it doesn't take much to spend over ten thousand dollars on computers, obviously, so. Okay.
Rich, do I make a question? You said the ambulance, I think I heard you correctly, two hundred and twenty grand?
Correct.
And currently you have twenty thousand put aside?
Correct.
And you said the ambulance would be replaced in twenty nineteen?
Correct.
So you've got some tools that have to be built at a higher level.
With some ketchup, it needs to be done.
With some ketchup, do the two twenty to get that by twenty nineteen, right?
Mm-hmm.
Challenge.
Challenge.
So the total proposed capital budget is sixty-seven thousand dollars. Also, there's a release of prior capital funds. The capital program committee recommends the release of excess funds from the following previously approved and completed capital project line items. Number four, town hall server, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. Number five, senior center stove, five thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars. And number fourteen, the police cruiser that we purchased last year, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. The total recommended for release, six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Any questions on that? Okay. Thank you. Stabilization fund. To see if the town will vote and raise an appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds, a sum of money to be placed in the stabilization fund. Submitted by the finance committee. Michael?
This annual article allows for transferring funds into the stabilization fund as part of the finance committee's ongoing goal to build up the town's reserves. Stabilization fund is a reserve fund which can be used for catastrophic or emergency events or when revenue sources are below prior year levels. A two-thirds vote of the town meeting voters is required to appropriate both to and from the stabilization fund.
Okay, and the amount this year that's recommended to go in the stabilization fund is a hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. And the balance, if, if it's approved, in the stabilization account will be four hundred and sixty-nine thousand to, uh, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Questions?
Just for a point of interest, do you have the amount that was transferred last year?
Thirteen thousand.
And change.
And change.
Thirteen, eight, thirty, two, something. So.
I know I can look it up, I just didn't know if you had it.
It was adjusted at the special town meeting, but it was, it was thirteen thousand and change. It was no more than thirteen thousand five hundred.
That was because most of the money was used to snow and ice.
Yep.
On there. We had a unique circumstance this year with a four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar free cash outlay, and, and it was not, as, as some have stated, a misappropriation of funds or a not spending of funds. We had an influx of money, which is a one-shot deal. We had, through some accounting differences and.
Prior town accounting.
Prior, prior town accounting, you know, prior town accountant being very conservative, we had some, some funds that were already there. Typically, our free cash would be around two hundred and change. So what we discussed in our finance committee meetings and with the joint meeting with the selectmen was to take the, the opportunity at this point to put a little more than tip, than usual into our stabilization account. And the reason that we're doing that is we've just been made aware of some potential looming issues that could be catastrophic financially for the town. Specifically, well, I'll say it, this building. There is, there's actually a committee in place currently, looking at different options for coming up with a, a location and, and plans for a new municipal building. Essentially, this, this building is, is reached, or reaching the end of its useful limit. With the information that we've recently received, there has actually been requested by the selectmen a shift in the, the committee that is responsible for sourcing a new municipal building to come up with an emergency plan. We don't know if something catastrophic is gonna happen here, six months, a year, two years. We really honestly, at this point, the building's moving. We don't know when it is going to be deemed to be unsafe. And if that happens, before a plan is put in place to find a new municipal building, we're gonna be in a very difficult situation emergently to find out how to continue operating the town. So that plan is, is currently being worked on by that committee, and I'm sure they welcome any other input from other townspeople. So that being said, putting a little extra into the, into the stabilization account isn't such a bad idea. Because when that emergency comes up and, and we need to call a town meeting to use some of that money to, to fund that emergent situation, then we're gonna have to do that. Not to mention the fact that currently, the town does not have a bond rating. And, and by adding more to the stabilization account, that puts us in a much more favorable position to obtain a bond rating. So by, by showing that as a town, with the town's money, we're able to save for our future and save for our emergent situations, that puts us very favorable with the state with regards to getting a bond rating.
But to be fair, the reason there's not a bond rating is not because we, there was no money, it is because there hasn't been a need to borrow money by the town outright. So the bond rating comes when you're looking to borrow the money, correct?
Yes.
So that's why there's, it's not, there's not a bond rating because there was no money in the account. It's because there hasn't been a need to.
Without, without an adequate amount in the stabilization fund, similar to your E and D account. It, to get a bond rating that's gonna give us a favorable rate of return to borrow money, it just won't be there.
Yeah, we, we've had to do it every time we've done the roof.
One factor is town doesn't have a master plan. And that's a very favorable component.
I just wanted to ask one more question based on what, what you just said, Paul, is the, you said word influx of money? Could you explain that?
Well, the, I'm.
That's what I'm researching right now. This happened, let me just say, when I came in here, the balance in the undesignated fund balance was seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, what was?
Seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand. In FY fourteen, it was about six hundred and ninety-four thousand, so the.
What fund was that, that you're?
Undesignated fund balance, that's how you.
That's how you pay your bill, right?
Calculate free cash. That's, what an, an undesignated fund balance means, it's the excess balances left in the appropriation account and the revenue above and beyond what's projected on the tax recap sheet. And that rolls into that fund at the end of the year. Now, in FY fourteen, it had an ending balance of six hundred and something odd thousand, like I said, so the, the increase from fourteen to fifteen wasn't great. Whatever happened, happened prior to fourteen. And I think the previous town accountant told me there was a one-time shot of money that went in there. I don't know what it is right now. As I told the, Paul, that I'm gonna research it and give him the information. But it was a one-time shot, and it pushed the fund up drastically, and then it was like six ninety-three, and then this year it was like seven hundred and something. It only went up about a hundred thousand dollars, which is about right. But prior to fourteen, I don't know how it grew that much, and that's what I gotta.
So in other words, what we base the budget on every year is based on a revenue projection.
Yeah, exactly.
And you can project conservatively or you can project aggressively.
Yeah, I think I had that discussion before, as you told me.
And so if you project conservatively and tax revenues come in higher than what you projected, you're going to have a higher free cash amount at the end of the fiscal year.
I would say in FY fifteen recap sheet, based on the actual revenues, there was more than a hundred thousand dollars additional revenue going into that fund balance. Now, why is that? Because the town accountant was very conservative on what she estimated.
For revenues.
Right. Now, you can go to reverse with that, but that would be up to the board, the selectmen, the finance committee to show the actuals. And as long as you don't go over like four percent or something drastic, then the department of revenue wants to know what you're doing. You would reduce the tax rate, but you'd have very small free cash figures.
So moving forward, we're anticipating that our revenue projections are gonna be a little bit more on target. And therefore, our free cash is going to be significantly lower going forward.
Well, that's what they want. Yeah, that, that's what they want, because this has been going on a long time. So I'm not gonna take it upon myself to change what was going on.
I think it's, I think it's important to note for the people here and the, and the people at home that this is the town's money. This isn't the money that is for a specific department or a specific group of people or a specific, one specific need. This is the town's money as a whole. And the finance committee sits here for five months a year and looks at the total amount of money as a whole and looks at everybody's needs equally for the thirty-two hundred residents of the town of Millville, what is in the best interest of the town's residents. And this is what we've determined is the best interest for the town's residents.
We, my own personal per, uh. We, my own personal pe, uh, opinion on this in the town here is we've got some issues that are coming down, uh, that we're gonna have to look at and look at fairly quickly. First off is this town hall, what, uh, what Paul mentioned. The other one is, I, I believe the police and fire. Eventually, you're going to need to do something there, specifically the police department. It's, it's in a building that was designed as a temporary classroom many years ago, and we're still using. Not the most efficient thing in the world. Fire department, the size of, uh, fire apparatus right now, uh, is outpacing what that building was originally designed for. And my own personal opinion, Brian, at some point, I think we need to modernize your operation, both in terms of equipment, but in terms of a, a town bar. And that's my opinion, I don't know if anybody else has that, but I do. So, and I think we need to look at how we're funding into the future, we need to get aggressive on that. You also have, right now, we have debt, well, fifteen thousand dollars on BVT, which is left on that. We have about two hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, at, uh, BMR, and I think that's the, the High Net Middle School. You also have a big train coming down the track in terms of the high school, and I'll support you a hundred percent on the high school being needed to have an upgrade on that. That building is almost fifty years old as well. My, my children saw it, they went to the High Net Middle School, brand-new school, new technology into the old school, and they got a good education in the high school, but there was a stock difference, and I commend you for, for moving forward on that. And if there's a way that this town, town of Blackstone, 'cause they, they have JFK, I know, is, is got a need as well, can work together so we can structure our debt and we can afford to do all of this. It's gonna take a cohesive group to do that in the next few years, so... That's what we're looking at here. Any other questions? Okay, fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate to borrow and to transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be ne, deemed necessary to defray town's expenses for all departments, including debt and interest and compensation for town officers to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and sixteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, or take any other action in relation to their too. Submitted by the board of selectmen.
All right, this annual article provides for all tax-supported town operations and activities, including the operating budgets of the schools and general government. Approval of this article will set salaries and expenditures for FY seventeen, July first, two thousand and sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, operating budget, and will allow for the proper allocation of resources for the continuing operation and welfare of the town. The operating budget may include funding which provides for additional work hours and/or salary increases for employees, including those previously negotiated and/or under contract. Please refer to the document entitled Proposed FY Seventeen Budget, and note that the columns include FY sixteen approved budgets, FY seventeen department requested budgets, and FY seventeen finance committee recommended budgets.
Okay, um, in order to move this along smoothly, might be a good way to, I would go, I'm gonna read the, the department total on it. If there's no questions on it, I'll go on to the next one. If you do have questions, we'll do like they do at the town meeting, put a hold on it, and then we can come back to those individual articles. I think that might be the most efficient way to, to go through this. Very comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay. Town moderator at department, um, total, uh, the request was a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, FinCom and the selectmen, um, recommends a hundred and fifty dollars. The selectmen, um, the request was sixty-one hundred dollars, uh, the recommendation was sixty-one hundred dollars. The executive secretary, the request was zero, the recommendation was zero. Town administrator, the request was ninety-five thousand dollars, the recommendation was ninety-five thousand dollars. Actually, I stand corrected, the total for that department was ninety-six thousand dollars, uh, the request, and the, uh, the approved amount was ninety-six thousand dollars. Finance committee, request was thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty, the recommendation was thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty. The town accountant, the request was forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty, the, uh, approved amount was forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty. The assessors department, the request was for sixty-four thousand, twenty-six dollars, the recommendation was sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. The treasurer collector, the request was for a hundred and one thousand, a hundred and eighty dollars, the approved request was a hundred and one thousand, a hundred and ninety-two dollars. The town council, the request was for forty thousand dollars, the approved amount was forty thousand dollars. Systems administration, twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, the approved amount was twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. The town clerk department, the request was forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, the approved amount was forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. The election amount was five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, the approved amount was five hundred, five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. The census account, two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars was requested, two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars was approved. Two thousand, two hundred dollars was approved. Conservation department, three thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars was requested, three thousand, two hundred dollars was approved. Planning board, fifteen thousand, two hundred and nine dollars was requested, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars was approved. The zoning board, zero request, five hundred and ninety-five dollars was approved, and that was level funding it with last year's budget. The town hall, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars was requested, one hundred and fifteen dollars, two hundred and ninety dollars was approved. The town reports, a thousand dollars was requested, a thousand dollars was approved. The insurance accounts, three hundred and eleven thousand dollars was requested, two hundred and twenty-six dollars was approved. Worcester County Retirement.
That's a huge guy.
One hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars was requested, one hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight was approved. The police department, four hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars was requested, four hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars was approved. The fire department, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars was requested, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars was approved. Building inspector department, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars was requested, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars was approved. Gas and plumbing inspector, three thousand, four hundred dollars was requested, five thousand, four hundred dollars was approved. Electrical inspector, three thousand, six hundred dollars was requested, eight thousand, six hundred dollars was approved. Civil defense, two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars was requested, two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars was approved. Animal control department, eight thousand, two hundred dollars was requested, thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars was approved. Tree wooden department, zero was requested, five thousand was approved, level funded with last year. Communications department, ninety-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents was requested, ninety-two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars was approved. Cable access department, zero was requested, twenty-one thousand, five hundred was approved. Gasoline expenses, twenty-eight thousand was requested, twenty-eight thousand was approved. Education expenses, three thousand, five hundred and forty dollars, three million, five hundred and forty thousand dollars, a hundred and thirteen dollars was approved. Was requested, three million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars was approved.
Respectfully whole.
Hi, highway. Total highway maintenance, hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred was appro, two hundred dollars was requested, a hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars was approved. Snow and ice removal, eighty thousand dollars was requested, eighty thousand dollars was approved. Twenty, highway street lighting, twenty thousand dollars was requested, twenty thousand dollars was approved. Highway street sweeping, fourteen thousand dollars was requested, fourteen thousand dollars was approved. Storm water, twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars was requested, twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars was approved. Board of health, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, oh, yes, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars was requested, two thou, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars was approved. Visiting nurses services, two thousand, five hundred dollars was requested, two thousand, five hundred dollars was approved. Human services, zero was requested, zero was approved. Senior center, requested was forty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, approved was forty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. Total veterans expenses, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars was requested, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars was approved. Library, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ten dollars was requested, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars was approved. Pox and recreation, two thousand dollars was requested, two thousand dollars was approved. Total veterans memorial park, three thousand, six hundred dollars was requested, total approved was three thousand, six hundred dollars. Historical commission, zero was requested, four hundred dollars refu, approved, the level funded with last year. Memorial day parade, four hundred dol, zero was requested, four hundred was approved. Centennial commission, zero was requested, a thousand was approved. Cultural council, zero was requested, zero was approved. The flag war at Wooden, zero was requested, three hundred and fifty dollars was approved. Total debt and interest, fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, total approved was fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. The grand total requested was six million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty cents against projected revenue of five million, four hundred and forty thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-two dollars, which left us a deficit of seven hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty cents. What was approved was five million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, thirty-seven dollars against that same debt of five million, four hundred and forty dollars, a hundred and thirty-two dollars. That left us a, uh, a deficit of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. From free cash to make up the deficit, we're taking two hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. From assessors overlay, we're taking a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Peg cable access fund, twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. So that balances, that total offset of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and five dollars balances the budget. Yeah, so the total budget amount is five million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, thirty-seven dollars. Brian?
Uh, I didn't need to read off, uh, highways, salaries, uh, you read off...
Total, total for the department.
You add up the seventy-three, two of maintenance and thirty for, um...
I stand corrected because...
Maintenance salary equals the one oh three, the monthly, kind of thing.
You are correct, I did not read that one off, and I missed it. Total, that, that numbers that I read at the bottom includes that seventeen thousand for the highways salary requested, and seventeen thousand approved. I apologize for that.
But the number, the, the bottom number doesn't change.
The bottom number doesn't change. Okay. Mr. Himmelberger. And, and Eric. Absolutely, please, come on up.
I was gonna save these until Monday night, but I figured I'd get them in here tonight just so we can follow along.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good evening. Um, I will be quick because of the lateness of the hour, but I felt it was important to come before you this evening. Uh, first of all, thank you very much for all of your hard work. Balanceing budgets in this day and age is not easy, and, and you all should be commended for the amount of time and energy and effort you put into this.
And please take as much time as you need to do that, I mean, we're not under a time crunch here or anything else.
I just wanted to, to let everyone know that last year's assessment for fiscal sixteen was two million, five sixty-one, seven eighty-nine. And I'm, gotta be honest, I'm very disappointed and, and deeply troubled by the fact that we're looking at twelve thousand dollars less and not some sort of increase. So what you have in front of you is, is what I wanted to speak to town meeting on, hopefully, um, on, on Monday evening, um, that the school committee's adopted budget was twenty-two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. And I've said this, and, and Joe and Jen are sick and tired of hearing it, because of the state and federal budgets not treating public education fairly for many, many years, the burden continues to fall on the local budgets. If we could increase last year's assessment of two point five six one by two percent, that would increase our assessment to two million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, twenty-five dollars, for a net increase of the fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six. The additional or supplemental share would increase from, I believe, the one twenty to one eighty-three, four twenty-eight, and this is because the minimum contribution and exclusionary costs were counted and calculated fairly, not with padding to increase a number to, to fluff, that's not how I prepare budgets and numbers. So our exclusionary costs and minimum contribution actually decreased by seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety-two, as of the writing of that on March ninth.
Okay, to, to, just to, as a, as a perspective, this is not to, to, to challenge it, we funded the minimum, and we funded the exclusionary cost, and then we funded the additional investment at a higher rate of the additional investment than we did last year.
Yes.
But because the other two were lower.
Yep.
The overall amount was lower.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The problem that I, the problem that I, as the superintendent, face is that transportation has gone up, special education has increased, curriculum and technology needs increase, our health insurance increases, everything has gone up, that is why the school committee adopted a budget that was a three point six percent increase, which again unfairly falls on the towns in the, in the assessments. If we could get two percent, that addition... If we could get two percent, that additional fifty-one thousand that I mentioned, that equates to an additional, we know that the assessment is based on the students and it's twenty-eight point one four, I believe, and seventy-two point eight six. So Blackstone would be able to increase their share by that same exponential number. Well, if we could get to one eighty-two, they would be looking at about four hundred and sixty-seven. That means our budget could get to twenty-two million, oh thirty-five, which would still mean that I would have to recommend to the committee further cuts of over a half a million dollars, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would mean a reduction in staffing to close the gap. Everybody is well aware that the lion's share of school budgets are salaries and benefits. So.
The numbers on here are strictly Millville numbers? When you say that fifty-one thousand?
Yes, sir.
That's the Millville number?
Yes.
What does the Blackstone minimum contribution look like compared to last year?
Uh, last year, last year, I believe, Millville's minimum was one hundred and fifteen, Blackstone was two hundred and eighty-five.
No, I don't mean the additional, I mean the, the state's minimum contribution.
It also went down.
It also went down, as a matter of fact, I have that number, Paul. Yeah, that number went down from, um, about, it went down eighty and thirteen, almost a hundred thousand dollars. Their combined minimum and exclusionary costs went down. All things being, uh, relative to the formula. So that fifty-one thousand additional dollars, that two percent increased over last year's assessment would allow us to only make five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of staffing reductions. And I've outlined where those would be. At the high school, no library media center coordinator, again, what we were, um, called on the carpet for with our NEASC accreditation. Uh, no additional science tech engineering teacher to write code. The reason that is so important is that the number one job for our spokes getting out of college now, this year, this month, is software, applications and code and writing code.
The problem I have with the terminology is you say cut, 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 when in fact it's just less of a net increase.
Some of its are, some of it are cuts, some of it is less of a net increase.
You're not actually cutting staff in some of these areas, you're just not adding them.
Well, in that particular case, we're not adding, but at the middle school and at the elementary school.
It's like saying a coupon saves you money when it just makes you spend less, it doesn't actually save you money.
That is correct, at those two positions at the high school, but those were positions that were cut and we have not restored. At the middle school, those would be reduced. District wide, no additional position. At the three elementary schools, those would be reduced. The bottom line is, we faced numerous cuts in ancient history of two thousand eight through two thousand fourteen. We have lost students to a lot of other options. If we continue to underfund, and that's a general term, our home school district, we will continue to hemorrhage students to other options. And if we wanna get down to a thousand students, we're going in the right direction quickly. So fifty-one thousand dollars, I will merely say our kids are worth every penny of that. Every penny of a two percent increase over last year's, um, assessment of two point five six one. I think it is important, we can account for, we know we have other things coming down the road. We found out this week that we might have an opportunity to, to lease some of our space at Millville Elementary to the collaborative. We do that at the high school, that brings in tremendously needed revenue. That at the high school, we were able to update our athletic fields, new auditorium curtain, update the audit, the, um, gymnasium and, and a lot of the things that I would expect we could do, use that money for, for the physical plant at Millville Elementary if we do get that, um, agreement. The bottom line is, we can't go backwards, we can't go below last year. Two percent would leverage itself into only a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction. And yes, Paul, you're absolutely right, some of that is not adding or replacing positions that were cut in the past, but most of them are reducing staff. We will have to do it by not replacing those who are resigning or retiring. Because we need to keep and maintain staff morale, we need to stay away from high unemployment costs, which we have now finally turned a corner on, and that is critical. So I only bring it to the, the finance committee and, and to our selectmen present that, that fifty-one thousand, I know represents a lot of money. We've seen it where it goes in the budget. That fifty-one thousand is, is big dollars based upon what you are looking at. But it leverages itself across the district in such a huge opportunity. And that's where I, I simply ask for your consideration if we get the town meeting and that is where it, it, um, would be addressed. I just wanted to give the, the committee a, a heads up this evening and, and I thank you for your time.
When we, when we last met, you had two open issues out there that affected the budget, one was the.
Like five.
Well, there were two major ones, one, can I, let me finish. One was the, um, negotiations on salary and the other was the insurance on that, has that resolved itself at all?
Salary negotiations are still ongoing.
Okay.
Health insurance, we believe is, um, has been resolved. And, and that will come in at, at somewhere around a five point eight percent increase.
Okay, but you're not gonna come back to, to the towns?
Absolutely not.
For that, okay.
The other piece of it is, on the, on the grand scheme of things, you mentioned the, the aging infrastructure at, at, um, the high school and at John F. Kennedy and certainly, um, Millville share is only for the high school. But those buildings continue to cost us money that we never budget because much like when things break and, and suddenly, it, it costs much more, it's much more challenging to shift funds and resources to take care of what you need. The classic case being the elevator at the high school. We had to go on eBay to find someone that still could make something that was able to patch that through. Um, and that would be part of that planning, that future, that future planning for capital costs. But it, it, we're, we're in such a, a critical position, um, certainly we know that, um, like everything else, you make do with what you have. But that, that fifty-one thousand dollars over and above last year, which would translate, if you add that seventeen thousand, one ninety-two, um, you know, comes in around sixty-seven, sixty-eight grand, over and above the amount of that additional chunk. But when you look at how it was constructed, it really puts us in a, in a real challenging position. So I only, I only ask for everyone's consideration.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanna add, I, because you had that question about the unop- un, you know, unfinished items. The, um, I've watched your meetings, um, as they've gone on and.
From last Wednesday?
Uh, many, uh, any that were recorded. And when you've spoken of the school, there was conversation of us coming back to a special town meeting because we approved, that, that is not how it works. We have to absorb that into our budget. So if, whatever the negotiations end at, it's not something we would come back in November or December, or, I'm sorry, November for a special town meeting and add to our budget on. And I believe there was definitely some misunderstanding about that, um, as well as our insurance money, we not being included in, into our budget.
No, I'm glad you, I'm glad you clarified that because all of us were under the impression we might have to go to a special town meeting. In the fall to, uh, recertify and.
I don't know that the school in my time has ever come back to a special town meeting asking for, for more money to fund the yearly budget.
Yearly budget.
I don't, in my years, even before school committee, I, I've never seen that, but other people made.
And the only, the only real area that's, that we seem to be getting a win on is, is energy costs. And, and we all know that from our own utility.
And that's cleaning, that's nothing to last for, obviously.
But that, that piece of it, the bigger piece of it is maintaining the buildings, keeping everything afloat and then getting more and more of the tougher to educate, more expensive to educate, more challenging to get to achieve students. That is what we do, public education. So I, I only respectfully ask for the consideration of that, uh, two point six one three, uh, assessment number. We would not anticipate coming back for anything. We will make it work, um, but that's, that's really, in terms of leveraging that smaller dollar into four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, uh, on the Blackstone, uh, side would be a huge, huge in our ability to meet a half a million dollars worth of, of reductions. And only that, and not have to go, uh, any lower.
The, the numbers are fighting against each other.
Absolutely.
You know, we've got a projected revenue of five million, four hundred and thousand and we had a deficit of four hundred and twenty-four thousand. I went to grad school, they did public budgeting, they said, you've gotta work your budget to make it as close to that projected revenue as possible.
Absolutely.
And every year we keep going in the other direction here. What, what kind of commitment can we get out of, out of the schools that next year we're not in the same? We get a number first, across the board, first time, that's realistic, that we can afford and not have something that's several hundred thousand above what was last year and it puts it out of a range that we can even, can't even talk about.
I think, yeah, I think, I think the commitment that I would make to both of our towns is that every dollar that we have to spend is accounted for. I s- I'm still fighting every time I'm in Boston because it's not fair that we spend less than thirteen thousand dollars per student on our kids, which equates to about seventy dollars a day over a hundred and eighty days. And yet the towns are assessed for Norfolk Agricultural and Tri County more than double that.
Oh, absolutely.
That cannot be fair. And if you look at all of the pieces of the puzzle, and again, Jen and Joe are sick and tired of hearing it, and probably Helen too. The, 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 the fact that special education continues to go up and yet the feds and the state have abdicated addressing it. It, it's just, it's just impossible for us to try.
And so it, it is, it falls unfairly to the local budgets.
And, and I think the commitment, Rich, is, is that we will continue to monitor and work together, um, so that we can start to plan long-term, so that we do have a handle on what we need. You know, every time, English language learners, last August, after the budget was set, that came out from the state and said, this is what you must do. We didn't have the money for that, so that was something we had to do by statute, by law, by MGL, by, by CMR, but we don't, didn't have any money to, to fulfill that. Um, and that happens all the time. Circuit Breaker was set up to defray the more expensive, um, special education costs. That's not funded fully. I mean, if you go down the list, it, it, it puts public districts, whether they're municipal or regional, in about the most challenging position you can be. Here, hit all these benchmarks, but we're not gonna give you the resources to do it and good luck with it. But you better do it or else. And so I, I believe that we are on the right path, I believe that we are making, um, real strides. We just, we have our, we have a teacher that was at the White House yesterday. Dr. Capwassver, from Millville Elementary, recognized as the, the Council of Exceptional Children's Teacher of the Year. I mean, that's, that's amazing.
It is, it really is.
We have a food service director, who's the food service director for the northeast region of the country. We have a middle school principal who is a finalist to be named, um, Middle School Principal of the Year from the state of Massachusetts. We have a phys ed teacher at Millville Elementary who's one of ten. So we have a lot of good things happening. And I wanna continue to retain students, not make it the third and fourth and fifth choice for parents and for families. I want folks to be able to say, we want them to live in BMR because of the quality of the education and what we have to offer. And it doesn't mean going pie in the sky and, and asking for, uh, the moon, hoping to get the horizon. So that, that's all I wanted to say, I appreciate your time and, and thank you very much.
You know, you know, I, I appreciate you coming in. You know, this is, this is a productive way to discuss these kinda things and go over these kinda things when you come in with a rational, a rational request, a, you know, rational explanation. However, you have to understand our animosity towards the BMR school district because, um, in the past and even as recently as today, uh, there's impassioned, ridiculous and defamatory statements that are written on social media against the finance committee, against the selectmen, uh, by our own school committee.
I, I would respectfully say that that's incorrect.
Paul, all I can tell you, all I can tell.
There's nothing defamatory on there, Paul.
There's nothing defamatory?
No. It's questions and, and just as we get questioned as a school committee.
So, so what, so let me, let me, all right, whatever, let me, let me finish my, my comment here. Um, it, it's, again, the, the animosity also stems from the fact that, um, in the past and within the last eight, ten years, whatever, it's been the expectation that if the town has any additional funds in free cash or, or stabilization or whatever, that it becomes the ownership of the school. The school should have it. Well, again, I will.
Under my leadership, absolutely not.
Again, I'll, I'll restate a comment that I made earlier in the, in this meeting. This is the town's money. As the finance committee and in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen and all the other departments, we need to come up with the best, most logical use for our money. The school department most certainly has needs, but our other departments have needs too. We have a, a DLS report that came out that clearly states some of the needs that we haven't been fulfilling to this point, that we now need to do and that costs money. We have a failing infrastructure that costs money. We know that the, that the high school's looming in the, in the distance with their issues and, and the need for renovation. We have to start planning now for that. So, you know, when we, when we put our budget together and, and in this case, we took, we took the, the minimum contribution plus the exclusionary and added a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to it, which is a four point three percent increase in what we gave additional last year. Cause last year we gave a hundred and fifteen, that's four point three percent difference. Um, you know, that, I mean, I, I consider that to be pretty generous. However, you know, I, I appreciate you coming in here and, and I hear what you're saying and, you know, it's something for us to deliberate on.
I think you guys know, as a committee, I wrestle with the same problems that you do. How to balance, how to stretch, how to make things work, how to plan in the future. My commitment is to the school committee, but it's also to the towns', uh, boards to work together. And, and I wanna say in the past twenty-two months, there's never animosity from me, there is never anything but we have to work together because we're all in it for the same reason.
I, I have to admit, I have noticed, I have noticed a change. This, this year has most certainly been from a, from. Us dealing with the school has been a significantly better, better year. As a matter of fact, that, I mean, the numbers that you brought to us in that first meeting, I think it was the first time since I've been involved with the finance committee, which was many years ago, that I could actually follow it and understand what, you know, you took from here, you added to here, you added to here, you added this, you, you know, what, I, it was, I could actually follow it. Cause before, like, like you and I have spoken about, it was this, you know, eleven column ridiculous spreadsheet that, that not even a master of finance could understand.
And state budgets, local budgets, school budgets.
Frustrating.
They're as frustrating to explain to anyone. And I've always made the, the comment to folks, just give me a call, come on in, I'll take you through all the numbers. Most people don't last more than twenty minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I even commented to, to, you know, Rich and Mike that, wow, I, I can actually read this budget. I actually know where the money's going.
Joe, uh, can I actually ask to put you on the spot a bit as the chairman to have some thoughts on that? And I don't mean to do that, but I, I think it's important to hear.
You want my seat? You want my seat?
No. Your question?
I don't have a question, I just wanna get your thoughts on, on uh, on where we're heading here.
Basically, I, I had some slides I shared with you. It just felt a bit, a bit of a project, but. Bottom line here is that in the last six years. Virtually the money the town had spent running the town, virtually remained flat. The, trying to keep pace with education. I'm coloring, so I think we've got blue, red, green here. These are, these are the trend lines, and this is the total budget. And we had a bit of a glitch in finding the fiscal twelve. In that we uh lost a senior center in the library, uh due to financial, but we, we were able to get him back. So. You, you can see that the town has made every effort.
Absolutely.
To keep up. Now. The uh, kind of kind of myself, I need, need to get together on some numbers here, right? When I first moved into town in two thousand and six. You know, the tide been having me to do, I looked, I read the uh town, annual town report. And there was something in there called the fund balance. Okay, in two thousand and six, it was almost two million six hundred thousand dollars. We closed. Uh fiscal fifteen at less than a million dollars. So basically the sum, shot it out, it looks like that. But what it means, that, that fund balance, all, all the funds, uh, the resources the town has. It's not part of the general fund. Trust funds, the reserves, things like that, okay? And the whole deal here is that fund balance is down sixty-three percent. And don't you, so what do you think? That difference had to be made up in that gap, cause that's where it's going. So what do you think, assets, just trying to keep up? In the interim here, we're, we're facing eroding infrastructure and, and the like that we really need to address. But I, I totally agree that a strong education system is needed. How are we gonna get people interested in that town, to move in? Right now, our uh, our average equivalent value per capita is forty-six percent below the state average. So that, that equates, you know, to a decrease in land value. The town I came from, you know, it was very well financially managed. But I get fourteen times return on the investment in the property. That's why I was able, I was able to invest it in Millville. But guess what? My investment is, and that's what it's all about, stakeholder. But the education box is also part of that whole. System.
Just to add to what Joe just said about the undesignated fund balance. The school committee can keep five percent of the budget in excess and deficiency. That would equate to just over a million dollars of, of E and D. We were certified at seven hundred and thirteen thousand by DOR. But we've, the committee has put three hundred and fifty of that into offset the budget. So now we're at three sixty-three. So much as you said, Rich, if, when we go out to try and bond a construction project with the, with the Department of Ed and MSBA. Our bond rating will suffer. But for me, the short-term planning has to be improve the curriculum, improve the technology. Make, meet all students' needs and get the word out that BMR is thriving. And this is a place that you can buy a house and raise a family, and your students will do very, very well. And we have to do it carefully, we have to do it targeted, we have to get some help from the state. I mean, the commissioner turns around and, and leaves when I tell him that, you know, you're not treating us fairly with the, the uh. The way that the state computes the foundation budget. In nineteen, in the nineteen nineties, and Professor Finn will remember this. The feds chipped in about ten percent of a town, of a school district's total sources uses of funds. The towns contributed between thirty and forty percent, and the state picked up fifty or sixty percent. Well, now, this year, FY sixteen, the federal government has given us about three percent, just under. And the state has given us forty-nine, and forty-eight percent now comes from the towns. That, that has totally shifted because the metrics that we are governed by to compute chapter seventy in the foundation budget. Are from nineteen ninety-three. Well, nothing is the same. And they know, the state knows, that it would take an additional two point five billion with a B. To properly fund chapter seventy, to take that burden off of the municipal budgets. But because the state's spending on healthcare and, and health insurance and Medicaid has doubled in the last fifteen years. There's no money available at the state level, and they don't wanna raise revenues, I get that. But at the end of the day, then you gotta give us some tools or release us from the ties that bind. Oh, yeah, by the way, you're gonna have to put in these assessments, you gotta educate these students, and you gotta hit all these marks. Great, but we can't do it with reducing our budgets, Mr. State and Mr. Federal Governments. So that's my public service announcement for tonight.
I, I, I gotta go back to, if, if that number is increased by that fifty-one thousand and change. That becomes the baseline number for the increase next year. And we keep getting further and further into deficit spending every year on this thing. This year, we've got a one-time um anomaly, is, you called it, of additional capital. That's not gonna be there next year. How are we gonna balance the? We're getting to the point where, where that deficit is so great that we, either we, you know, make drastic cuts and start again. Or we ask the townsfolk for an override. And I, I don't know, as a town, how do we? How, how can we get some commitment that this, that number is not gonna jump exponentially next year again?
It's not sustainable.
Yeah.
Well, it's not sustainable, is right.
I, I just wanna add, and this has not been talked about as a committee. I know that it's very clear from the meetings I've watched and from the meeting we attended. That coming to you with more than a two and a half percent increase in that number is not an option. It's very hard for us at the table because of, depending on what comes to us from chapter seventy, it puts us in a place. But a few other things I wanna mention that will hopefully help us. As you said, how can we guarantee that that's not going to, you know, skyrocket each year? Uh, we are, we do have a three to five-year plan that we are ready to give to you. Um, I would say after budget season, just to, um, but I think that will bring, you know, you'll know that we have already been looking at that. And again, myself, I, I know, I know where we stand with Mill, I know the other Millville members know where Millville stands. Um, and we are just going to have to do a better job to make sure that is not more than two and a half percent. Uh, the, it's, it's just, if we look at the, we, we keep looking at trends and charts and how much it's grown. I'm sure we could make a chart on how much we've asked for and how much we've gotten. And it, it's not more than the two and a half percent, so it keeps coming to this table. The plan has to go backwards. Um, I, I'm certain we are very well aware of that.
And I think too, the committee is looking at the past ten years, it, the funding has been very uneven. Rather, if we could have gotten, as you say, planned small.
We got hit a couple of years ago with our state minimum contribution.
Yeah.
Right through the roof.
Yeah.
And it was because the, the town's property values were reassessed, the, you know, we, we got hit hard, which was, was really weird. Demise started, cause it, it, it was. You know, it, we weren't able to give additional anymore because our minimum contribution went so ridiculously through the roof.
Yeah.
I remember when that happened.
Is that going to happen again because the values were just reset?
Yeah, I mean, Joe has the, has the trend.
That was probably two thousand and seven.
We had, we had jump, I mean, like. Huge hit.
Where they just don't.
And, and you know, Joe and I went and, and stood in front of Senator Moore and said, help us, what, what can you do? We went to his public forum in, in Norbridge and said, you know, we're getting hit with this out of the blue. Because you do an entire page full of math. And, and one of the key points is, is total land and property values. Well, what it doesn't account for is the net property value. So if someone has a four hundred thousand dollar house, but they have a three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar mortgage. You can't call that town wealth. You can't call that four hundred thousand dollars town wealth. You have to subtract out the net and figure it out that way. So, you know, o- ours was increasing because the state was saying, hey, you, you've got the ability to pay more. Based on this new development you got here and, you know, per capita income and all this other stuff. But it wasn't taking out the, the expense of people living here. And, you know, the.
And to be fair, that, that state formula, you're right. It's, it's income and property valuation, that's all it is. And it's a percentage and, and that's the same for every municipality. And unfortunately, towns like ours get the short end of the stick on every stick. And that makes it very cha-challenging to, to try and fit everything. I think, I think the more, the longer I'm here, and it seems like it's longer than twenty-two months. But we are getting a better handle on setting each individual line. Because you look at trend analysis, you look at historical data, but then you also look at where you're going forward. And, and that gives you a lot more input into each one of those lines. I think that um while it would, I mean, a perfect example, if we get three students in. That have high costs to educate, and we have three more students who choose to go to Norfolk Agricultural. The net impact on your budget and, and ours is, is unbelievable.
It is, it is.
And that's where we are, that's the challenge that we are facing. We're trying to keep more of our expensive students meeting the needs here or with the collaborative, not expensive placements. We're trying to find out why folks want to look at so many alternatives. When we know, we have a level one high school and a national championship marching band. We have a middle school that is just the envy of all of the towns nearby. And we have great things happening in all three elementary schools. So we need to get that word out and say, you know what? You need to send your students here. Don't choice them out. We want, we'll take more of Bellingham, Oxbridge, that, that have the, the ability to send.
And I think a, a point, just a, is a point for all the folks at home. Students have a right to go whatever school they want, and every one of us agrees with that. You know, be it BVT, BMR, uh Norfolk Aggie or Tri County.
Mount St. Charles, homeschool, choice out.
Oh, absolutely, but, but the public, in the public sector, those four are the ones that we end up funding, and they have every right in the world to do it. All we're asking for is the state to find a, a, a formula that doesn't burden. Uh, the out-of-county or out-of-district towns who send their students to that. In perspective to, uh, an in-county student going to Norfolk Aggie who lives in Norfolk County, it's about eight thousand dollars. For us going there, out-of-county, it's twenty-two thousand dollars.
Transportation puts us over twenty-five.
Plus the transportation cost on top of that.
We're educating students at twelve and change, twelve thousand and change is a huge bang for the buck.
All everybody is asking for is a level playing field to be able to afford to give the students those opportunities to do, to go to the school of their choice on that.
And I've told our staff, don't worry about the competition. Competition is good, it makes you better.
Oh, absolutely.
So let's worry about the everyday blocking and tackling that we do. And, and folks will be able to make their choice based upon our results and what we are doing. And so we, we're excited about putting a TV studio in at the high school. That's gonna give our students a whole new opportunity. So there's a lot of good things going on. So I, I just wanted to, to take the time to share with where.
I'm asking a lot of these questions, just to clarify things for everybody who's listening to, to this or, or will be watching it. The E and D account, E and D account um is, is some, is like a stabilization account in a lot of ways.
The same.
Now, the money that goes into E and D, that's not programmed out. That is what you're able to.
The time you have to spend it is when you exceed the five percent of budget threshold.
Right, but you don't program an amount to put into that account as part of your, your operating budget. That comes from efficiencies and finding ways to do things cheaper during the course of the fiscal year.
Audit that is submitted and, and certified by DOR.
At the end of the fiscal year, if you have monies left in your operating budget, it goes into the E and D account. Okay?
When everything is balanced out, absolutely, absolutely.
So based on that, how much in FY fifteen did you put into the E and D account?
Not much, because we spent it on curriculum and textbooks that we hadn't been spending for the years before that. This year.
Any idea what that number is?
I, not off the top of my head, but it was small.
Okay.
Less than a hundred thousand.
Okay, less than a hundred thousand.
On twenty-three million total spend. This year, we're probably gonna end up with nothing. Because we're, we're spending right to.
Okay.
The bone, so we're not gonna have encumbrances, and we're probably not gonna have a whole heck of a lot to add into that E and D. But we now know where every penny is. And we know the plan, as Aaron mentioned, where we want to spend it. So that we are in a, a planned um growth. That doesn't always have to include double-digit increases to a budget. But can be, we can look at efficiencies, we can make sure that we have the, the best um logistics and operational costs. Takes time, but we're doing it.
Okay, so here's where we are. From last year to this year, our deficit increased about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That we had to, to, you know, find a way to balance the budget. Three hundred and three thousand, we had to figure, this year it's four twenty-four, nine oh five. We add your fifty-one thousand, two thirty-six to it.
Sixty-three, four twenty-eight.
The net match because of the seventeen.
Because there was a reduction. So when, when you add the fifty-one to last year.
It nets to about sixty-three.
Sixty-three.
So you'd be asking for an additional sixty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars?
Four twenty-eight dollars.
From where you are now.
Right.
From what we're at, two point five four nine.
Okay.
It's actually, it's actually an additional investment of a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
Right, exactly.
So we would have to come up with a hundred and eighty-three?
No, 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 just the additional sixty-three, additional sixty-three.
Okay, so that's on top of our four twenty-four.
Sixty-three, sixty-three, four twenty-eight. So if you add that to four twenty-four.
And that would allow Blackstone to meet that. And together only cost us the reductions that I outlined on the PowerPoint. The five hundred and fifty thousand.
Four eighty-eight. So we would show a deficit of four eighty-eight, three eighty-three. It's almost a half a million dollars that we'd have to make up here with, beyond our revenue. I mean, that's, that's significant.
But you already have all the other numbers in place. It's to make it zero.
What's that?
You already have the, the four twenty-four, nine oh five, so it's the sixty-three.
Oh, we do, but we're, we're, we're using.
We still have to look at the whole tone of picture.
Well, the problem is that we, that money is not gonna be there. We only have revenues of, we're deficit spending, basically. We only have revenues of five million four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So.
And, and to your point, Rich, this, last year and this year are investment years. So that instead of choicing out eighty and only choicing in forty. So that instead of choosing out eighty and only choosing in forty, maybe that flips, and we only choice out forty, and we choice in eighty students because of the word getting out that you can get a pretty darn good education at B M R and a pretty high-quality one. And, um, I think that that, there's so many pieces of the school budget that affect the, the pluses and the minuses. It's, it, it's mind-boggling. But at the end of it all, it comes down to what makes you good, what do you stand for, where do you wanna be, what do you wanna do going forward? And that's all that I have been, um, about with the help of this committee, which is, is spot-on. And, uh, I certainly recognize, um, the challenges that the towns face because of the, you know, it, it's, it's a small, a relatively small portion of the non-voters that we're serving, and yet it's a big chunk of towns' budgets. But at the end of the day, it makes you stronger as a town, as a community, and it certainly draws folks here. Yeah, I wanna live there because my family can do really well. And I think that's the message that, that we will continue to move and, and strive for.
I'm trying to look two or three chess moves down the road here.
Absolutely.
When you do the, if the regionalization passes, what's the financial impact on that?
I would think that the only financial impact would be the cost of moving. And that's somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand dollars to physically move the stuff between buildings.
So there'd be a one-time sunk cost to do that?
One-time moving cost.
Or about transportation?
Would you, yeah, that would.
Transportation, I don't think is gonna go up at all.
We would love to see the savings.
Yes, the ride times may increase, based upon the current usage. The ride times may increase four, five, six minutes. That's, that's a given.
And the, the way the contracts are written, if we reduce buses, they still charge us per bus, so.
But it's not gonna.
Do they charge you per date for the, for the bus?
Yeah, per route, per day. It's not gonna increase, transportation's not going to increase. And there'll be some minor savings because you don't have to staff two literacy, um, bookshelves and, and bookrooms. You know, you're only gonna have them in one place because all of your grade is gonna be in one building. So, you know, it, it's minor, it's small, but regionalization, as the amendment is proposed, would not be, uh, uh, it's not gonna be a huge savings, but it's not gonna be an added expense the way I look at it, in terms of all things being equal, except for that one time, you gotta move the stuff. And, and when I was in Oxford, we did that. We had two elementary schools that were both K fours, and we put them in grade level, and, and it was somewhere around eight thousand bucks to move it. Thanks for listening, I appreciate the time, really do.
I think this is something, I guess, would have to be decided on the, on the town meeting floor at that point.
But is this something you could recommend? I mean, if, to be decided on a town floor, it's.
I have to, I have to.
We already know from prior experience that it's being recommended from the finance committee, it's.
My concern is that it puts us, uh, puts our debt, our, our deficit at almost a half a million dollars, which is really concerning to me. Four hundred and twenty-four thousand was concerning to me as well, still is.
And this year, we're instituting a new way of doing things with regards to the, like, the snow and ice, which was typically paid out of free cash, uh, where the accountant is, is doing budget transfers within the current year's budget to cover that deficit. If, if we'd had to cover that deficit this year, we'd be putting nothing away.
Yeah, our snow totals are gonna be less for a couple of years.
People would be working, you know, the town clerk would be working out of her car and accepting appointments at the window. I mean, literally, if, if something happened with this building.
I guess all I can say in closing is that, that additional fifty-one or sixty-three, counting the, that seventeen minus the five that's already in there, for this crossroads that we're at, will pay tremendous dividends for our kids, for our towns, and will, will still involve five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of reductions or not additional staffing, absolutely, not additional staffing. I mean, we run all of our technology, which is now wireless in every square foot of the building of all five schools, with two guys. I, I mean, that's, it's unheard of, that two people can manage a district's technology. And we still have to look at fiber, we still have to look at, at voiceover and, and at phone systems. But there's a lot down the road, but for the here and now, this is, I can't stress it enough, in this, in the cycle we're in, in the sequence we're in, and while I wouldn't say, oh, that means that next year we're gonna be able to go up additional, no, we're gonna strive to make sure we validate this spending and keep looking, keep putting pressure on the state, keep putting pressure on Congress to figure it out. When you don't even hear a discussion about public education at the federal level in the first eight months of this election cycle, I don't have a lot of faith that, that they get what every one of our fifteen thousand public school districts is up against. And, and so, um, have to do some more better, right?
The, really, this is not sustainable over, over the long term.
Nope.
And, and, and I, I think you're a hundred percent right about keeping the students we have in the two towns in the district who wanna go to school here, throughout their K through twelve on there.
Yeah.
But I looked it up, and our trend, in terms of just the population trend,
Yep.
has been going this way since the nineties, and I, I don't see anything.
But you look at our, our student enrollment was only minimally dropping from oh-five, oh-six through oh-nine. It was then that it really picked up steam. And we, and now, the last couple of years, we're about fifteen percent of our students that choose any one of a myriad of, of other options.
Okay, I, I wasn't talking about that, I'm just talking about the natural.
Yes.
The natural numbers available to build a school. Is really going downhill.
Right.
Available students, and then they, then they have the opportunity to go elsewhere.
Right.
Further complicates the issue on there.
I'd just like to add that I do wonder where they got projections to build a middle school with those, with the, the decrease we've seen since two thousand and five and six? Because I do believe, and I wasn't here then, that those were the years they had to have been looking at to build that school.
Right.
That's eleven years, twelve years old, so.
Yeah, but the projections were probably based in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand, and back then, it was still just starting to plateau off the peak, and the timing just couldn't have been worse, that once the building opened, is when population and, and demographics really shifted.
You mentioned about the collaborative, and I keep bouncing around because the thoughts keep coming, and I apologize for that. The collaborative, you might be able to, uh, get some revenue by renting the.
Leasing, uh, leasing.
Millville Elementary School. Well, if, if regionalization is approved, will that impact that, one or another? It stays, everything?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the, the amendment on the regionalization is simply to allow students to all come together by grade level. That's all, in, in K to five. That would be all.
Joe? Anybody else? Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other?
I don't think there's anything else.
Any other budget items here? All right. All right, I'll ask one more time, are there any other questions concerning, uh, the proposed budget or any other article that we talked about tonight? Another issue in this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I would ask for a motion that we close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Do we need a motion to reopen the meeting? Okay.
A motion that we reopen our regular finance committee.
I have no other business or old business that needs, that I can see. Is there anybody else?
Do we wanna post a meeting for, before the town meeting?
I think we should.
We usually do, so. When is the special schedule for six-thirty?
Public forum, would any, anybody else, uh, like to be heard? Any other issues, Brian? Okay.
I think we should just post a meeting for six o'clock.
Post a meeting for six o'clock?
Monday.
At the, at the school. Okay. Anything else?
Nope. Want to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Nice having, at eight-twenty. Thank you all.